We only address things that are on the council agenda. Public comments are for any citizens who want to make comments to the council. You know, we don't respond, that makes it a public hearing, we do not have a public hearing. For those of you who came regarding the turnpike issue, just want to make sure everybody understands that at this point in time, we have removed all moratoriums on zoning, building permits, or anything to do with the turnpike. Turnpike does not come within a mile and a half of the city limits of the city of Choctaw. So it's not a business item for us. We have not been asked any input with the governor, secretary of transportation, department of transportation, or OTA. So at this point, we really don't have anything business-wise to take up. I did receive a press release today that the next OTA meeting is April 14th at the Harrah Church. And so they'll have people there that can answer whatever questions you want to answer. So just want to make sure everybody understands what we're doing here tonight. So with that, I want to thank you. I'm trying to get sort out, we have three or four subject matters on public comments. Remember, public comments, we will allow 15 minutes for any specific subject matter, three minutes per person. If we have more than five people that want to talk on a specific item, we'll divide the 15 minutes by that number. We will give preference to Choctaw citizens. If we have those numbers, we may allocate the time with preference to the Choctaw citizens. So give me just a moment before we start trying to sort out the different subject matters people want to talk about. There are at least three different matters that people want to talk about. I'm going to assume that Mr. Arnold and Ms. Breen, these issues, I don't know what they mean. Are you wanting to talk about turnpike? I put that to where it needs to be.
It's Mrs. Arnold, and it's conflict of interest is what I stated?
Okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
What subject matters, please?
Um, turnpike.
Okay, thank you. With that, I would like to call the city council meeting to order and ask Councilman Malone to give us an indication and pledge, please, if you would stand and join him.
Dear Father, just thank you, Lord, for giving us the opportunity we have to come together and discuss the business of the city. We ask, Lord, that you give us wisdom in all of our decisions. As always, Lord, we ask that your protection on our servicemen and women as they serve and our protective edge around the families here. Christ, send me a prayer. Amen.
Boys' allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Continue, roll call, please.
Here.
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 Thank you. Okay, we'll move into our public comments at this time. And Susan, you have your comment, and you have your three minutes.
My name is Susan Updraf. My address is 3651 Santa Fe Drive in Choctaw. I've been a resident since November of 1986. Larry is my Ward 6, represent councilman. And there was an item that we, I requested be placed on the agenda as a business agenda item, questions, and I'll read it. Questions and discussions by citizens and the city council regarding the proposed toll road as it pertains to the city of Choctaw and the citizens involved. And it was my understanding that Mr. Gohler did present that to the city council, or here to the city. And it was not placed as a business agenda, it was moved to public comments. So I want to make that statement. I realize that this is, you can't answer, that this is public comment only. But I really feel very strongly in the fact that this is becoming a very emotional issue for eastern Oklahoma county residents, Choctaw residents, individuals that have questions regarding turnpike, how it might affect Choctaw, the implications, things that are going around it, surrounding it, some of the groups that are involved in it. And I think it's time that our city council has an opportunity to answer those questions and allow our citizens to hear what is, what's transpired, what the reasoning behind things were, what are some of the answers to these questions. Because it's becoming very emotional. There is a lot of resentment, there's a lot of frustration, maybe even some anger with this. And that only ends up manifesting itself more and more if there is not a discussion. And this is really what I wanted to share with you tonight and part of why my opening for this, I'm going to leave this to other citizens to come up and speak with you. But the frustration is there. And I really hope that you will pay attention to the questions they ask and the things that they share with you tonight and take that into consideration. We would like to be a business agenda item so we can have this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Terrence?
My name is Carrie Boyle, and I live at 361 Hickory Forest Drive in Choctaw. And I too have also been a citizen of Choctaw majority of my life. I graduated from Choctaw, I brought my kids back to go to school here. I'm an active member of Choctaw United Methodist Church, and I'm president of the chicken club at the high school, so I'm a very active citizen. I guess I'm a little bit confused as well, and to piggyback on what she just said, that it seems like the city of Choctaw is pushing this off with the comments that you made when we first started, that this isn't a city issue, this isn't a business issue for us. But it is, it is a city issue. I mean, there was a, there was a full insert in our water bill talking about the turnpike and the transportation possibilities and all of that stuff that came out to the residents. And it is becoming very heated. This, actually, it's my understanding that, you know, various leaders of the community, including Mayor Ross, along with other city leaders, have been working behind the scenes for several years for the presence of this turnpike and heavy rail to come to Choctaw. And that also, Mr. Height, Tim Height, who represents Choctaw, he has gone to various EOC city meetings over the past few months and given status updates about the turnpike and the possible path alignment news. So in my opinion, this is becoming a city issue. And Mrs. Mueller, as you know her very well, she served here for eight years as a councilwoman for Choctaw, she has been trying to get this on the agenda now for several months, and it seems like it's just being pushed off and pushed off, and, and she's kind of getting the brush off. She's made numerous attempts to get this turnpike added to the agenda. And it was my understanding that at the last meeting, one particular councilperson completely axed it from the agenda. And under the Choctaw city charter states that the city manager manages the administrative branch of the city and shall be responsible to the council. He does not have jurisdiction over the council members for whom he works. They make the laws and he implements them. Each council member, including the mayor, has equal authority to request agenda items. The city manager does not have the authority to decline a request from a council member. And so I guess as a citizen, you know, our concern is that we just want to be heard and we want our voices to be recognized, and we just want some answers. And that's the main thing of our, you know, of what we want. Also, I'm a little confused because it's my understanding that Mr. Nelson wrote in his blog four years ago, "I wanted to change. I wanted to know my kids, to break away from the rat race in the metroplex and not have to worry about the daily grind of the city management." Now I still want to be close to my kids and believe that I will be able to, even though I have a five-day-a-week job. Clyde is a city of about 3,500, that is way less than the 45,000 in Grapevine. Clyde is not in the DFW metro area, and we are trying to get a house where we can keep our cow, a big difference from being in the metroplex. I will still get stressed out, but I will also get to milk a cow every morning, and that seems to be a good way to cut through the stress before it ever gets started. So, you know, Mr. Nelson wanted to get away from that in Grapevine, Texas, much like we have here in EOC. You know, we have the country-style living, plenty of room, no traffic congestion, especially on our main town roads, peace and quiet. I'm kind of curious, why would you want to bring it here? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And let's go to the Vow Sports Complex issue, and I will, Gina, you'll be first.
I'm Gina Larchant, I live at 1217 North Indian Red End. Concerning the ballfields at Vow Sports Complex, which is located directly behind my residence, what happened to the 100-foot natural buffer zone that was supposed to be between our back property line and the sports complex? Because of no buffer and nothing else to prevent it and the lack of adequate parking space the weekend of April 1st through 3rd, there were people parking very close to our back fences. The people backed up to our fences, were hiding to drink beer and smoking behind their vehicles, and one person cooked on a small charcoal grill and just dumped the hot coals on the ground and drove off. That same person was back the next morning, and even though there were other parking spaces available, he came back and parked in the exact spot, same spot next to our fence. Because the grounds were not completed in enormous volume of traffic, this caused a large quantity of blowing dirt and trash. Because of no buffer zone, the noise is unbelievable, not just from the crowds cheering and yelling, car doors slamming, but the loud music that was played from the ballfields. That doesn't even include the noise that comes from all the extra traffic in the front of our houses on Indian Meridian. At 11:45 PM on Saturday night, they were still playing games and making noise. A Choctaw police officer told our neighbor when they had barking dogs and shooting fireworks that the quiet time was between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Traffic, there was only one way in and out, and we were told that there would be at least three entrances. It is almost impossible for us to back out of our own driveways due to the volume of traffic. There were motorhomes, fifth-wheel trailers, and lots and lots of cars. A lot of vehicles had tags from out of state, a lot from Texas. Inadequate signs for the entrance, I saw two small signs, maybe two feet square, with writing so small, you couldn't read it until you passed it, and the south one was down by noon on Saturday. Since there were not adequate signs, most people missed the entrance, which caused them all to turn around in our driveways, which caused more traffic congestion. I'm asking the city council to put up some type of barrier to absorb the sound and keep people from parking up next to our fences. Also, there should be more than one entrance and exit with large enough signs that people can read them. Are you really going to allow people to drink alcoholic beverages and smoke and park right up against our fences? It appears that there are going to be games going on almost every night of the week. Would you want to live with the noise, trash, dirt, traffic, and smoking and drinking in your backyard every night? I have provided you photos, all of you with photos, of what we had behind our house. Thank you.
Thank you. Avery?
My name's Avery Larchant, and I live at 1305 North Indian Meridian, just two houses down from Gina. And I agree with everything that she has said, particularly the noise, especially from last Sunday. It was extremely loud and parking up against our fence. I agree with her that there does need to be a buffer zone instead of parking up against our fence. Thank you.
Thank you. Tindall? Arnold?
Hello, my name is Tindall Arnold. I'm a resident of Harrah, and as we discussed in our last meeting, when public comments were not accepted, I am from an unincorporated area of Harrah. I am here because Senator Ron Sharp sent me to talk to you about the Eastern Oklahoma County Partnership. He said that you speak for me and that my voice was heard when Eastern Oklahoma County Partnership, city councils, and city chambers spoke for me to my representative. Many of EOCP goals are for the Eastern Oklahoma, all of Eastern Oklahoma County. Those of us east of Choctaw aren't very fond of the conflict of interest Mayor Ross has created. I shouldn't have to track down the Eastern Oklahoma County Partnership chairman here in City Hall. How do you claim to serve the voters in a representative capacity while sitting on a board of a business lobbying entity at the vote tech? How do you resolve the conflict of interest? The turnpike is taking homes of the very taxpayers forced to fund the vote tech. We are forced to fund housing for your other job at EOCP with taxes from the very homes you plan to have paved over. How do you justify the thousands of dollars you pay monthly from Choctaw city funds to your other job at EOCP? Do Choctaw citizens know this is how you're spending city money? What do they, as citizens, gain from that expenditure? From where I stand, you are in a situation of undeniable conflict of interest. This is generally the easiest way to slip into a hotbed of corruption. Most elected officials tend to avoid it. The situation has been pointed out to this council before, in this very chamber. Did the council even address this issue? Not to our knowledge. Is this council aware that your activities, of your activities at OML, are they in support of how you vote when you are there? Is OML just another lobbying platform? It seems that Mayor Ross is more lobbyist than public servant. Having his voice heard two and three times over while those he affects cry to deaf ears. Mayor Ross, your reach has extended well beyond this city. The true goals of the city council and the EOCP are cloaked in online polls about parks and restaurants, but you failed to ask the citizens if they support a massive push for industrial growth. You didn't ask if they would enjoy the park if it came at the cost of alienating their sister cities of Harrah, Newhalla, Luther, and Jones. You guys are ripping at the fabric of what makes Eastern Oklahoma County a community. Will they support this growth if the revenue goes to pay off the city's legal bills and $22 million in debt? Where is the forum for genuine questions and answers as it pertains to the actions of this council? It is alarming to realize that the Choctaw, the Choctaw city council does not want to hear objections. It certainly fails the litmus test most citizens would hold this council to as it pertains to running a representative government. Those of us being affected by Choctaw's planning want no part in its efforts to grow if it comes with zero accountability and a $22 million price tag. Harrah isn't interested in that kind of debt and that kind of accountability. We once again extend an invitation to the council to review your own city charter as it pertains to conflict of interest. That dialogue needs to happen. We also invite you, despite claims by the city manager that it will never happen, to have a question and answer. If you have nothing to hide, there's no reason you would not invite this dialogue. So we invite you and ask you one more time to create a forum for that for your residents and residents being affected by your actions.
Kristy, please.
Hello, I'm Kristy Ren. I live in Harrah Ward 3, Choctaw address, Choctaw schools. I grew up in Choctaw, attended Choctaw schools, so I have a 35-year high in interest to the Over the past several months, because of the issue of the Eastern Oklahoma County turnpike loop, many people, myself included, have become more interested in local and state politics. For some, it was because of the direct impact of the loop on their homes and land. For many others, though, that was only the latest of a series of concerns that the people of Choctaw have had, concerns that have been and continue to be ridiculed, ignored, and dismissed by the city council and mayor, instead of taking an active role to listen to the citizens and represent them as they should. So far, it seems the only people being represented are either you, with your own personal agendas, your supporters who agree with you, or those in the business sector who agree with you and are looking to grow their own personal fortunes. Many people do not know that even your own political aspirations, Mr. Mayor, came to fruition thanks to an upset citizenry who recalled their mayor due to concerns about how he was governing the city. Other recall attempts of councilmen and a lawsuit followed, whether it was that instance, the one we are dealing with now, or any other of a myriad of problems. Choctaw sadly has a history of poor representation by its city government. I would say city leaders, but I have seen nothing that meets the definition of that term. Leadership in local government means setting a vision and a goal for a city that is shared by a majority and believed in by the citizens. Having a vision to fundamentally change Choctaw and maneuvering politically to make that happen without the buy-in and support of the people is not leadership. That is what is known as fascism. When you have shadow groups like the EOCP that you, Mr. Mayor, founded and are the director of, that have not and will not open its records to the public, yet claim to represent the people, that is not leadership. By the way, city council, Mr. Nelson, why is the Choctaw and the surrounding towns paid according to the information in the EOCP bylaws, Section 4, Article 1.1, a potential total sum of over $500,000 to the EOCP? What does the city of Choctaw have to show for it? I ask because there's nothing in the city council, minutes, unless it was something discussed in your frequent executive sessions and not with and to the public. Mr. Mayor and the city council, the citizens have yet to see any results from the EOCP. Most did not even know of its existence prior to this turnpike issue. Even the Department of Education and Technology Center bigwigs can't tell us what the EOCP does, which is wrong and sad because it shows just how little faith you have in the people to be involved in the economic development of Choctaw. You have thousands of people who choose to live here, choose to raise their families here, and want to choose to stay here in a growing community that they are a part of, not one that is fundamentally changed out from underneath them. You would think, as mayor and chairman of the EOCP, you would be using these positions and those resources to engage the people, not infuriate them. In many ways, Mr. Mayor, it seems as if your role here is just a hobby, a trophy on your mantle. Internet searches of you pull back hundreds of photos with the movers and shakers, but very few with the common folk. It's funny, there have been lots of awards garnished on the mayor and about how well he does his job. Many of them are from personal friends and supporters who have been nominated, nominated him for those awards. But what awards has the city won? What accolades have we received? What recognition for how great of an area this has been, has been bestowed on Choctaw? Sadly, when you research for Oklahoma's best in Choctaw, the only results that come back is that for Choctaw Casino. You want economic growth and development? Let the people have a say in how the city develops, and you will see people flock from all over to be a part of what is happening, and you will see the city change for the better. Instead, we have numerous lawsuits and more pending against the city. We have a population that is upset because they are not being communicated with and involved in matters that affect them. We have city governance that is showing increasing signs of what has plagued this town and others for way too long. That good old boy system of politics, where certain folks get special treatment and certain business people make undue influence regarding regulations, policy, and action. Whether that is the Town Square project or housing developments that you want to use city utilities to the EOCP, the CDA, the EOCDA, the turnpike loop support, or the new baseball complex, there is a pattern of governance that is wrong, and it is infecting the city. If you want to see the source, or at least what is allowing it to continue, look to the left and right of you. Heck, the last master plan for Choctaw was done 25 years ago. That was an update made by two college students to the one from the 1980s. You want growth and are saying you are bringing it, but you don't even have a plan to do so. Well, you did hire a consulting group last fall for $195,000 to get you a plan in about 18 months. So there is that. This city is not in financial trouble because of the people, it is not growing because people are preventing growth, it is not all that it can be because people are holding back. It is your lack of involvement with the citizens and your inability to listen and govern properly that is causing the issues we face. And Mr. Nelson, as city manager, you also hold a very important role in the governance of the city, from contractual agreements to personnel matters to operations of the city. But the track record of your management is certainly questionable, from property lawsuits to personnel issues to a failure to engage the public. How is that inspiring confidence in the direction of the city? A capability touted by Mr. Ross when he announced your appointment to this position, mere days after you were passed over by the city of Miami for the same role? Maybe it was your unwavering supportive reformer loss, the mayor of Grapevine, Texas, during all of the scandals and issues that plagued that city. Maybe it was your desire to see massive growth of industrial and business complexes and toll roads 24 lanes wide surround that city. We would hope that it was actually your desire to live in a quiet rural lifestyle but aligned with most of the residents of this area who have chosen to make Choctaw their home. You certainly seem to have that sentiment in Clyde, Texas. Wasn't that why you said you left Grapevine? To get away from all this development and enjoy your little farm with your family? You see, we have become increasingly aware that the city is not the problem, the citizens are not the problem, even the state Neotec is not the problem. The problem is that our elected officials are not representing the best interests of the citizens, and that is the problem. Sure, you can read supportive op-eds in the Choctaw Times, but so far, every one of those in support of the loop has been written by someone connected to Randy Ross, from city employees to developers to even his own son. Interestingly, those connections are not disclosed, much like Police Chief Clay's letter to the Oklahoman, where he was referred to as a resident of Newhalla, and no mention was made of his official capacity in town. Even the local businessmen in favor of the loop have failed to mention their connections to the CDA, the EOCP, and the city leaders. Why is that, Mr. Mayor? Why is it that on social media, there are only about 100 people aligned with the turnpike and support the direction the city is taking, and yet there are multiple Facebook pages with thousands? And in a couple of cases, tens of thousands of people who have been looking at what is going on and are concerned about and opposed to what is happening. You would think, as needed and supported as you say this project is, you would find just the opposite. When we talk with and engage people, even representatives of the various entities behind this plan, no one stands up for the loop in how this has been handled. They deflect and defer. Well, that's just progress, or you'll have to talk to so-and-so about that, not me. Or worse yet, they demean, calling the citizens provincial, misinformed, your word, Mr. Mayor, or compare us to the citizens of North Korea. Choctaw is like North Korea? Wow, that political and historical reference ought to have elicited a deafening renouncement by all of you. To compare this city and this community to a repressive communist regime is unwarranted. For you not to defend the city you call home, okay, some of you live here, but it's not really home, it's unconscionable. So for the sake of the proper political and historical context, we should not be compared to the repressive communist country whose leader is a dictator. And those who disagree are sentenced to labor camps, whose people, because of an inability to properly govern, go without the most common amenities. We should compare this situation to America immediately after the attack on Pearl Harbor. Prior to that, even though the world around us was at war, America had remained unfazed and largely unaware of what was going on in the political arena. But after the sneak attack by the Japanese on December 7th, America woke up from its slumber and became an active force in the war and a change for good. Mr. Mayor, city council, the surprise announcement on October 29th was our Pearl Harbor, and the citizens of Choctaw are now wide awake. We are active, and we are going to hold you to account for your actions. You want fundamental change? So do we, and that change begins with you. As a wise person I know recently stated, the best disinfectant for our government is sunlight. All eyes of the state need to turn to the Eastern Oklahoma County. A lack of the citizen's voice in many matters, a P3 organization that needs to be held to full accountability, especially now it receives thousands of dollars a month in taxpayer money as membership dues for these towns' governments to belong to. What are the motives? Are they political donations? Where does it go? How does the citizen benefit from it? Then why are the meetings not open to the public? Keep those eyes looking forward, voters, and you will see that this turnpike project is just the very tip of the iceberg. Perhaps that sunlight needs to come shining in nice and bright and very soon in the form of a recall petition on each and every one of you, supposedly sent here to represent us. You forget that we, the people, give you that power to govern us, and when you don't do that, the first thing people should do is air grievances at public meetings. That has been an utter fail, wouldn't you say? One-sided comments only go so far and have had zero effect of the year. If you don't listen to those who put you in power, maybe it's time to clean house. Just a thought. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments on items not on the agenda? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, we did have one. And Helen, I do apologize, I did not monitor the time on the last subject matter. We went about three times over, three times what we should have. So come on down and we'll hear what you have.
Well, I'm not quite as prepared as them. I just got the pictures made. That is my property. I've lived in Choctaw for 47 years, and that is supposed to be an alley water drainage that is being filled with trash and leaves and stuff, and the water's being drained into my yard. And I've had city, I've been here to City Hall twice, trying to get somebody to do something about what that guy's doing. Now, that's supposed to be a water drainage, and that's what it looks like right now. You can go up there and look at it. And if something can't be done, I can't afford to have my house fixed to get, I've done, got my hand messed up trying to work on it, and I'm 70 years old, and I can't do no more. That's fine coming, I just want something done.
Thank you so much for coming. I'd like to move into our business. Did I miss anybody? Anyone? Did I miss anybody? Thank you. Item five-point-one is a consideration approval of special event permit for casters to hold a secret mile event in Choctaw Plaza on May fifth. That was discussed in the county's pledge. Motion to approve.
Second.
Another second, to give any discussion on that. Seeing none, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. Item five-point-two is an approval for amendment to the Kent Crawford Memorial Contract. We went over that. Roger, do you want to make any other comments regarding that?
This is similar to what we've done with Powerhouse Catering, and that's how we were purchasing the equipment, through what we would have received for the fees.
You refer to explanation, entertain a motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
Another second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. We have a special event permit under five-point-three for color fund management. See anyone here from the high school on that? Seeing that nobody's here, but I would entertain a motion. A motion to approve.
Second.
In a second. Thank you. Any discussion? Oh, yeah, yes, we do the labor, we have TES, for our policy. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Eyes have it. We have consent agenda items six one through six seven. I do have a request, I was not here, so... Request to have minutes changed, include the... Yeah. Part nine, I'm going to have to defer to somebody that's here, make sure this is okay. Okay. I've entertained a motion to accept consent agenda, approve it with the markation to the minutes of the three fifteen minutes.
So moved.
Motion?
Where is this going? How are you changing it? Where is this item going?
It'll go, just an add-on. Have second, continue, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Eyes have it. We'll go, I'm unaware of any new business. Counselor staff remarks this time. Malotey, you guys didn't go to Miss Choctaw page the other night? It was great, you know, Miss Choctaw, Casey Slagle. She did an outstanding job on that project. So, yes, I do get into the public. It was a great event, sixteen girls. You don't know how good the talent in Choctaw is, she was good. Any other comments? Seeing none? None? No, we don't. We don't have an executive session, I assume?
No.
I didn't think so. So, to adjourn. To adjourn from city council, I'll call CUA to order, or I'll call pen to please.
Tom Breckin, you're in South Howard. And Matt, you're in Marlin.
Here.
Mary Bellas, you're in Allen.
Yeah. Thank you. Do we have any public comments regarding CUA? Seeing none. I'll move to consensus agenda item four-point-one, which is approval of div to the East Water Utilities Supplies Construction Bar Lines Northeast Tenth Project, that completes that loop of Tenth Street. Roger explained that pre-council, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
A motion to approve in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Eyes have it. Item four-point-two is the surveying for the Northeast Water Utility Project, again, same thing. Do we entertain a motion? A motion in a second. Any discussion?
Do we have a timeline on that?
Roger?
Pardon?
Do you have a timeline on the water project on Tenth Street?
It's a three-month project, is what they are sending, and this is the last piece they need. They've already got the contractor. We'll give them a cut loose on this, two-week delivery on, I think, the largest site, which is the man name, so... Any other discussion? Seeing the idea of motion, second. Any discussion, seeing that? All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Eyes have it. Item four-point-three is the contract with John Baxter for the engineering services at the Corneille Rotary Press at the Sur Plant. Do we entertain a motion to approve that? Motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Eyes have it. Move to consent agenda items five-one through five-five. Do we entertain a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Eyes have it. I am unaware of any new business?
None, sir.
Any trustee or staff remarks regarding CUA? Seeing none, under proposed executive section, I'm surprised that we do not have to go into it if we want to make a decision regarding the point of issue, so...
I'd like to make a motion that we reject the offer presented to us by...
Thank you.
Second.
Motion in seconds. Discussion for those in the audience, there's a lawsuit that CUA Choctaw won, and the other side says we'll walk away and forgive them, they won't appeal, and so we're rejecting that offer. That was the motion. Having that explanation, I would call for a vote, all in favor of rejection, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay.
Eyes have it.
I'm unaware of any other business. We adjourn for CUA. Thank you.